Tracy, what's the protocol? Mask on or mask off during the meeting?
You may take your mask off while you're seated. If you're moving about the room, you should put it back on. You are properly social distanced right now, so if you feel comfortable taking your mask off, go ahead. If you're not, go ahead and keep it on.
It gets warm.
It's up to you.
All except the glass.
Yes, that's right. Glass wearers don't like the mask.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're ready to start.
Okay. We've called to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 15th, 2020. I've been just asked to read a statement. Pursuant to the executive order number 20-69 issued by the Office of the Governor, Ron DeSantis, on March 20th, 2020, municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a quorum or of its members present physically, or at any specific location, and utilizing communications media technologies such as telephonic or video conferences as provided by Section 120-54, for instance, 5b2 Florida statutes. Procedures for public comment will be explained by the town clerk shortly. The members and no members participating virtually.
The agenda, the materials for each item on the agenda, and the notice regarding the virtual meeting were made available beginning June 5th, 2020, on the town's website. And it's also available in the town clerk's office during business hours. The public was given the opportunity to submit public comments to the town clerk prior to the meeting. The town has developed several new methods ensuring public comment for a virtual meeting. Any persons may be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission through teleconferencing and upon registering with the town clerk pursuant to the published notice to speak for not more than three minutes on any item on the agenda. Since this is a virtual meeting, as authorized by the governor of the state of Florida, members of the public wishing to address the body may do so by. The town clerk will unmute the public once the chair calls for public comment. Persons interested in speaking may speak up to voice their public comment. Do not unmute your physical phone until you are ready to make a comment. Remute your phone once you have completed your comment. Persons who cannot access the meeting by teleconferencing using the computer with speaking capabilities or through a smart application can call Town Hall at 561-732-2635 and notify Town Hall staff of their public comment. The Town Hall staff will notify the town clerk, who shall read the public comment into record. These public comment options established for the virtual Planning and Zoning Commission meeting comply with Section 286.0114 and Section 120.84 Florida statutes. The public that is physically present for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting may participate in public comment by coming up to the podium. The town of Ocean Ridge has facial covering requirement and also encourages the public to practice social distance. All chairs within Town Hall have been measured to comply with the six-feet social distancing requirement. No touch hands and stations have been placed next to the podium and as well as next to the entrance door of Town Hall. Tips for virtual meeting: Try to use one device. Do not attend the meeting by using both the computer and telephone at the same time as you experience a feedback with a strong echo and will not be able to hear participants on the meeting properly. Mute your phone if you're attending by telephone or computer. Those that do not mute their phones can cause disruption into the meeting. Do not unmute yourself. If you're attending by go-to-meeting application or a computer, please do not unmute yourself. The town clerk will unmute persons after public comment is called by the chairman. If you have physically muted your phone, please unmute only after public comment is called before and the town clerk has alerted the public to unmute. After you have made your public comment, make sure to mute your phone again. The information in the chat box is a public record. Call Town Hall if you experience any technical difficulties.
Wow, glad I didn't have to read that. It's too early. Okay, thank you, Kara. You want to call the role, please?
Member Carey.
President.
Member Hennigan.
President.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsh.
Here.
Member Kocinski.
Okay, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll open it to any commissioner comments.
Yeah, I was spending a little time looking through our town code. And one of the things I like to do once projects get underway is kind of watch what's going on. And sometimes the job is incredible and sometimes leaves a little something to be desired. So with that in mind, I wonder if in construction projects, and Mark, you would know a whole lot about this, if you see something that doesn't look right, you can, you obviously point it out, but if we can encourage best building practices, green construction, and energy efficiency. I couldn't find any of those things on, and I don't think we can compel people to do it, and I nor do I think we should, but I think it wouldn't be a bad move for the town to do this.
Yeah, I mean, those are good points that I think we should all be cognizant of. I'm not sure, Brian, you may help me here. I don't know of any town or city that's actually got, they may have some guidelines, but I'm not sure if they're actually code written, or written as code.
The only time I've ever seen, not, and it's not requirements, it's more if you do this, then the town will give you this. And so it's kind of a carrot, kind of a carrot approach where, okay, if you, you know, decide to build so much green, then we will, for lack of a better term, you know, let you encroach into the setback or increase your far, do something like that. I mean, there's a plus, and I'm sure you've seen it, too. So other than that, I'm not aware of anything. I don't know if you want to go down that road or not in looking at, you know, okay, do we really want this? And if we do, they're going to want something in return.
Yeah, you're familiar with LEED?
Just a little bit.
Yeah, that's more of a voluntary approach to construction, but the incentives are encouraging. I mean, you know, I can say it was very popular, I would say, five, seven years ago, but somehow seems to have lost its momentum, which is unfortunate, but.
Yeah, my, this is strictly suggestion. It's not, I wouldn't want to compel it, but if we can encourage people to do it, and maybe carrot and stick might have some benefit, it might be something to consider.
Yeah, as I said, I deal with it personally, but.
Sure you do.
It's more of a voluntary and a professional approach to the building practice in regulated format. I'll open it to anybody else that might have a comment regarding David's comments or suggestions.
Good comment. Not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, you know, if it's viable, but it's just, maybe we can encourage it.
I think the products and things, you know, the industry is conscious of environmental, much more so than they were, environmental elements and what's going to be sustainable versus that, you know, discarded. So unfortunately, I think it's in the industry's hands right now. Martin may have some. Do you have any input? You've got your fingers dirty, so.
Martin Vischulek, Five Angle Drive. And I think it is, at this point, it is in the hands of the developers, of the people that are using it, that want to use it. There are, I know there's incentives on the state level that you can, if you do green building practices, you can, it's incentivized on the state level. It's incentivized by things like FPL, you know, certain things that you do to your house. There is incentives out there. The question is, is the incentives worth the trouble of doing it? And that's when it comes to the homeowners and what the homeowners demand. So it's really demand-driven more than on the incentive-driven. One of the things that I was looking at with Wayne a couple of months ago before the pandemic basically hit was if, we have a couple of people that have used solar renewable energies, solar collectors, solar water, and based on that, obviously, you have to pull a permit for that. I was going through with him how many of these applications we had in town, what the permit fees were, because installing, for example, a water, as I did in my house, we have a pool solar heater that is connected to our pool system, so it heats the pool in the winter through solar. And the cost was, out of my head, say $6,000. So the permit fee is based on whatever the amount of the improvement is that you do. And that fee, if we are, if we're giving an incentive, for example, for complete renewable energy use, by saying we're charging instead of the regular permit fee, which would mount to probably about $300, $400 roughly, if we give it to them at a minimal cost, like the minimum permit fee of 50 bucks, or $45, whatever it is at this point. And we ran the numbers on it, and it came out that this might be actually more of a symbolic thing, but it states the position of Ocean Ridge, and it can be used as a position of Ocean Ridge to say, you know what? We encourage sustainable energy. We encourage green building. We encourage you to do the right thing. We're barrier island. We're here. We're, you know, we're on the front lines, and we're doing our part to make sure that everybody gets the right message.
Yeah, there are a number of things. I'll just give you an example. I did a house in Gulfstream with 132 solar panels. And how do you disguise those?
It's your job.
Yeah, it was difficult, but it was a totally self-sustainable house. But, you know, again, that brings other issues, so we've got to be careful.
Right. Now, again, you know me.
Well, I think it's a great suggestion.
Don't want to compel anything.
I think if the building department can encourage it, then I think we're all for it. Anybody else got a?
I just wanted to say thank you to the town staff for all the communication and everything for these trying times we're having. And I also wanted to ask, and I presume this is from you, Brian, about 6,009? I think it's 6,009, was that right? The one that needs to be condemned?
Yes, is that the?
It just grows, it just becomes more of a jungle every day and more of an eyesore, and it's awful.
Okay, well, I mean, the jungle part, we can handle through nuisance and everything. I think what we were trying to, the last, and this is kind of before a lot of this stuff happened, the last conversation I think I had with Wayne, he had talked to the gentleman up there, and we were starting the process of, I think, possibly trying to get a civilian, an expert or something like that onboard to start the process of, okay, let's move forward with the unsafe. Now, I don't know where that is in all of that stuff, because I, obviously Wayne's not here now, but, and so that's where we were at that point. And that was probably a month ago.
Well, and I think we had that discussion back when I came in, six months ago. But it is an unsafe situation, and we, as a town, need to push it forward and do something about it.
Yes, so the last I knew, Wayne was working with the owner to come in and get a demo permit, but I don't believe that's happened yet. So we will follow up Penny after this meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Actually, if the commission wouldn't mind, I think this, we've kind of, we've had a transition on the building department, and I'd like, Tracy, maybe could you just bring the board up, or the commission up to speed?
Absolutely.
With Wayne Scott leaving and or absent.
Right, so Wayne is still working with us as the interim building official. He is working with another community right now. He's giving us a few hours per week. And then also, we are utilizing HIBER to do our regular plan review and inspections. We have another building official on tap. I'm just waiting for a start date for that individual. Hopefully, it's soon.
How is it, how's the transition been going? Is it pretty seamless?
Yes, it's been pretty smooth.
Okay, I just wanted, if you don't see Wayne, that's.
I don't have a comment, but a question for staff. I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but I'm a little surprised, the last time we met in January, and that there's no plans for review at this session, though I know of demolition that's been done and houses that have been sold to be knocked down. What's in the pipeline? What can we expect for the remainder of the year?
So we have about four that have come in. But remember, before it gets to you guys, they have to address all comments from either Corey and Genuin, and a lot of them right now are in the addressing comments stage. And sometimes, depending on how long the contractors takes to answer their comments, can delay, because I have deadlines of when I have to send out notices and advertise and do all of that. So if they're not ready by the deadline, then we can't put them on. So right now, there's possibly two that can come up for the July meeting. It's just a matter of, right now, staff is still reviewing.
And they have to post a sign on the site, is that correct?
We do.
We do. And when, how long before the?
So I have to send out mail notices 20 days prior to the meeting, put it on the town's website 15 days prior, and then put a placard on their property 15 days prior.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just have one final comment, and then I'll be quiet. I'd like to encourage that we set up workshops with the town commission, at least twice a year, so that we can keep the continuity between both commissions and avoid any, you know, issues that might be festering or in the background. I don't want to go through that again. But I think it's a very proactive way to keep the correspondence. I hope everybody is in agreement.
Is there any, excuse me, is there any preference on timeframes for that? Would you like one in January and one in July, kind of split it out by six months?
Yeah, I think six months, whatever. January will be important when we have everybody definitely here. But summer maybe a little bit. We can go to the Bahamas and have a meeting with Penny. Okay. All right, let's approve the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to approve the minutes? We'll have a motion.
Just one small comment. I believe the January meeting was chaired by Mark, and so therefore, he'd have done the Pledge of Allegiance. I missed that?
I had one question as well. It was on page four. It said, "Member Hutchins asked for clarifications on the fence setbacks on the rear properties. Building and Public Work Director Cameron clarified that waterfront properties, front and rear yard setbacks are 25 yards." And I was just asking for the setback of fences, which I think is different than a yard setback, but maybe I'm wrong. So I'm not certain what Wayne answered.
Are you talking about perimeter fences, or?
Yeah. If you have a fence on your backyard and you sit on a canal, can you build the fence up to the edge of the seawall? Or do you have to have a setback, which I believe you do?
That's a good question. I know side yard and front yard, but I don't know where.
I think the comments are correct. The setback is the same as the front setback on waterfront property. That's one of the ordinance changes. The only reason I know this is that we'll be coming forward with you all to discuss.
So it has to be set back 25 yards from the seawall?
25 feet.
Yeah.
Well, that's substantial. I don't think anybody's, that's, that's, could entail most of the backyard.
Well, that's why we're coming forward with some suggestions.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other comments on the minutes? Does anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now some internal action decisions. Selection of a chair and a selection of a vice chair. I'll entertain motions. Yes, David?
Yes, I'd like to recommend you to be the new chair.
Before you guys make a motion, remember you have to do public comment as well, just in case anybody has to, any inputs.
Is there any public comment? Are we missing an alternate?
Yes, at the next town commission meeting, if we get any applications. Right now, we're only, we only have six and one alternate, so we're missing one alternate.
And the alternate is Matt Gracie?
No, no. He rescinded the position, so we went back to advertise.
Okay, thank you. So any public comment on nominations?
I nominate Mark Marsh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vice Chair?
I nominate Rick Carey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. You're going to be our liaison to the commission, okay? I'm always late, and you're always there, so. I nominate you as our first assignment. That's your first assignment. Okay, the last item on the agenda is discussion regarding code amendment priorities. Tracy, do you want to?
Yes, yes, please, thank you.
Oh, by the way, thank you for, thank you.
So the town commission met at their goal-setting workshop, and some of their goals were to preserve the integrity of single-family neighborhoods and continue engaging the Planning and Zoning Commission to close loopholes in town code and develop town codes that are fair and enforceable. The PNZ should explore code amendments related to blight and property maintenance, dune protection, unity of title for dune properties, streetscapes, and protecting our canopy. And then the list of the code amendments that staff was working on with you all were the coastal construction control line setbacks and regulations to include dune preservation, unity of title for dune properties, sheds and accessory structures, fences and temporary fences, and signs. And then we were also looking into moving forward with looking at the demolition code, blight and property maintenance, right-of-way encroachments, streetscapes, protecting the canopy, and the scooter ordinance that was brought up, I think it was last year. The town commission will be meeting at their July 6th meeting, and they are looking for a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission as to which codes you would like to start on first, and what are your priorities.
Okay. Thank you. That was quite a list. I don't know if you can all recall what Tracy just read off, but the single-family one, what was? Say that again, community, to encourage a single, more single-family.
So one of the town commission's goals was to preserve the integrity of single-family neighborhoods.
Okay, I got blight and property maintenance. CCL.
Mark, did you get, did you get your package? Because there's a list in your package.
The very last page.
I apologize. Do we want to just spend a minute and see if we can, while we're all together, prioritize?
The way I was thinking about it is, is there anything at the bottom of the list that any of the commissioners feel like should be moved up the list?
Finally, I would like to see the blight moved up.
Well, haven't we taken care of sort of items one through five? So why don't we pick out a couple that are the remaining low-hanging fruit?
Excuse me, Mark, do you want to take public comment first?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, is there any public comment?
Good morning, Commissioner. Happy to see you, happy to be here. Since I was the one that threw this on the agenda for the commission, I thought I would address it. There's a couple of things. I think we have a really good set of codes, and so I would ask that in your review of this, that you look at what are the existing codes? What is the difficulty potentially in enforcing the codes, if there is any? And what are the penalties associated with it? And I think when you look at all of this on the list, there's really two pieces to the puzzle. One is something that is under construction and the construction site portion of it. And the other one is what is already existing within our single-family neighborhoods and how that impacts other people. So not to be bare or bad news, but I have two more to add to the list at your discretion. One, and this has come to me from just different calls, because you know, as you sit on a board, everybody attacks you in the grocery store and stops you when you walk your dog, and everybody has something to tell you. So these are two that have come up. One is flood nuisance, and that is mainly from homes that are either under construction and there has been nothing to mitigate the water as it's running off, because no drainage has already been put in yet. And then there's also the flood nuisance of homes that have been either elevated or have taken out certain landscaping or other things like that. So again, the goal being that you retain all your water on your property as much as possible. It's an inch an hour or something like that. And the second one is light nuisance. Light nuisance, as in overhead lights. A lot of the construction areas have been lighting their places up, I guess, to protect equipment or materials that they have onsite without necessarily realizing that there's an impact, particularly across water canals. I mean, light along with noise seems to spread, you know, illuminate. And the other is light nuisance within a single family. Within our island, somebody who is a seasonal resident decided to light up his driveway like a Christmas tree, because he leaves four or five antique cars out over, when he's gone. And again, I don't think anybody's doing any of this with, you know, mal-intent. It's just, you know, law of unintended consequences. If you aren't there at night and you're not standing in your neighbor's yard, you don't really understand the impact of that. So with that, you can add that to consideration, or you can say no?
Can I just make a comment? Those last two, I don't think we want to encourage, you know, some of this is, I hate to be kind of nonchalant. Some of it is housekeeping or code enforcement. You know, light pollution, for example, if somebody is affecting another party. I mean, I think it's reasonable to make a call to the Town Hall or the police station and notify. I don't think we want to regulate, I just, sorry.
It can't be code enforcement if we don't have anything in our codes addressing it.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, I don't know how profuse or wide a spread it is, but.
I've gotten at least three calls on three different properties, and one of the properties very clearly said, you don't have the right to tell me to do this, and I'll continue. So unfortunately, we've kind of gotten to that. So unfortunately, we've kind of gotten to that, you know, we've gone from being a troubled teenager in town to a semi-adult and we still have a lot of troubled teenagers, unfortunately.
No, I, I think the, the light thing, although I, uh, wouldn't want to be the one to have to do the code enforcement, it's increasingly, as people change out to LED, uh, external lights and, uh, they'll have these on their eaves, I noticed this walking my dog, and then suddenly you've got a glaring light at a place where there didn't, there wasn't one previously that, that, they've changed out to newer, more efficient, but brighter lights, uh, that, that, that shine beyond the perimeter of their properties. It's, uh, uh, you know, whether they need to be, uh, have, um, shields around them so that the beam goes where it was intended and stays within their property, but, um, you know, we have to give code enforcement the tools.
No, I, I understand, I just, Brian, help me here. What do we do? Again, I, I deal with a number of cities and, uh, light pollution is-
Well, I, I mean, you know, it, when you're constructing a home, you just tell them, especially in the commercial thing, it's kind of like you can only have so many, what puts the term, the, uh-
Foot candles.
Okay, foot candles, it, it can only be so great or it can extend beyond your property line. Now, when you have, and I was just sitting there thinking like, okay, I've got lights on my eaves and there might be a little bit that overshadows onto my neighbor's property. I'm not quite sure, I'll have to look at it tonight, but, um, you know, I mean, I, I think, uh, I don't know if you want to try to address it as far as it can't be any more foot candles than this, or if you say, no, you can't have it extend beyond your property line. Now, I guess one of my questions is the, the complaints, are they saying that the lights are going on their property or it's just lit up like a Christmas tree on that person's property?
Both, and, and one of the ways I've seen other towns mitigate it is these eave lights and stuff can only be on the sensor and then they go off at, you know, within a minute or two minutes, you know, if, if you're being used for that. But mainly your construction ones are just a continuous on and, and obviously something from a canal is not coming directly onto your property, but it's, it's, you know, it looks like a landing.
I, I mean, the construction ones, I think we can address that very quickly. Yeah, that's, that's not an issue. It's the longstanding where someone has lived there and they've had their lights like that for years and years and it kind of goes to like what, I think you were saying, where, okay, they, they've converted it out to LED or something and all of a sudden now it's, you know, there's more foot candles there. So I, I, I mean, you know, we would have to have a code section on that, but enforcement is going to be the, you know, the, the issue.
I think we've got to tread real lightly here. I mean, this is going to be a turf battle again.
Yeah, it's, uh, Hatfield's and McCoy's, I think.
I, I think this one would be a candidate for your, uh, discussing at a workshop with the commission.
This is kind, this, this is taking us down the road with signs and sheds and neighbors getting irritated with neighbors.
It's a black hole.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know in Palm Beach, on your landscape lighting, they limited to a fifty watt bulb, but I don't think they enforce it, to be honest. It's just a criteria, but again, and then generators and decibels and those are all going to come up shortly. You know, um, generators are a nuisance to most people, or neighbors.
They don't have them.
Yeah, and, you know, there's this, actually quite, I think every municipality, I don't, do we have a limit? What's our limit on?
We do.
We have a noise ordinance, so it's with-
Yeah, but-
It does cover the generators, that was one of the-
Yeah, because that's usually the one, okay.
Last, last term.
Well, I, again, I think some, as somebody mentioned, this should be workshop material. I think this is something we've got to work in conjunction with the, you know, town commission.
I think of these categories here, I'd like to roll a couple of them sort of in, into each other or at least make sure that when we did them, we, we looked at the impact across these categories because I think Penny's interested in blight, as, as am I, but I'm also really interested in construction site blight. And demolition and the fences, there's issues of all of those that are interwoven and, um, I, I'd sort of like to tackle that whole thing, uh, at one time and it rolls over into, uh, the penalty issue and it rolls over into code enforcement. And I, I think it's one big topic that, uh, you know, if you go around my neighborhood right now, it's like a war zone. And, uh, I, I, I've been stopped or at least yelled at across the, the street walking my dog about, you know, why isn't this going on or why isn't somebody stopping this or why are there four dumpsters that are encroaching out, actually into the street out of the driveway and it's been going on for three or four months during COVID stuff? So, I, I would like to see that all done as a general topic area.
So, so numerically off of this list, which one, what do you want to lump?
I, I would like to see fences, demolition and construction blight sort of be, be all addressed and keep, and keeping in mind code enforcement and penalties related to the subsidies when you go looking through our code because, um, sometimes there's already, uh, it's already addressed well, but it's not enforced well or there's inadequate incentive, let's put it that way, instead of penalties.
I think you, good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, I'm more focused at, to be honest, on the, the zoning issues, which are the coastal control, unitated title.
I, I think that's in the right place, right where it is right now, number one. We've already started addressing that, I think we just have to finish it.
Those are, I think, priority.
And what do you think of number two? I mean, that's something that I think we can't ignore when somebody's already made the iceberg start appearing and we have no idea how big it could be.
Right. Yeah, I think those, one and two are in the right, um, order. Right-of-way encroachments is another, you know, that has some bearing, that's... Because that's, that, that sets precedent.
I mean, two, two of the items we, um, we already had a preliminary look at, correct? We've gone quite far on fences and signs.
Sheds.
Excuse, excuse me, sheds and signs. How much more do you think we need to do to finish that, Tracy?
Staff should be ready to come back to you next meeting for sheds and also coastal construction.
And I, I probably missed the meeting where it was brought up, but I don't, I don't know what the concern is about scooters, um, but everything on here is something we can look at. What's the scooter issue?
Rick, do you want to-
That could go off the list. It was, uh, it all evolved from, uh, an article about another town fighting scooter issues and, uh, email, uh, passing that article along to the commissioners about a year ago. I think it can be crossed off. Thank you.
Let's do that.
Penny, can I ask also, Tracy, about the flood nuisance? I think that my question relates to A1A, particularly, um, near Corin. The daggers were at six thousand north ocean, I live six thousand old ocean, I'm in a corner like this. I call it like batter. We can't get through there any time.
The town engi-, yeah, the town engineer is working with FDOT on that right now.
Oh, good, thank you. I'll let you know when they ask me about it.
On the, on the general issue of, of street flooding, is that related to our need for another maintenance person to, to be cleaning out the existing drains?
Somewhat, but somewhat not. It all has to do with the maintenance of our current pipe, so it has to do with our maintenance, but also our town engineer and recommendations on what we need as a town.
So I think it's- I, I've got a, basically a, a, a private drainage pipe. It's not part of a town easement and I didn't want to give up my property for that purpose, so I spent a lot of time and money, um, finally getting a check valve put in place, which is, it's eliminated a big part of the lake problem on my part of the street. Of course, when the tide's high, the check valve closes and if it's raining, we get the lake, but as, as soon as it stops, the tide drops, the way it goes. But I think the drainage on the street in general is probably not adequate and I think Harbor Drive North is one of the lowest streets, uh, at least north of Woolbright. And, uh, I would say it might be something the engineer should take a look at. I don't know, can we, can we build new drainage from the street into the waterways?
That is something I'll have to have the town engineer address for you. I know there was a problem with not being able to get the proper easements along properties. That was one of the challenges that we've been having.
We fixed it on Thompson. We used to have Lake Thompson when I first moved in and whatever the town, you know, whatever the town engineer suggested and I, they get to it on our property.
Yeah, two, two good examples are Hudson and Coconut that were addressed as a total area, they do work, so. Okay, um, are there any other comments? Any public comment, additional public comments? All right, um, thank you all for attending and I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Congratulations, Mark.